All tonight's meeting, the order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose banner is one nation under God, indivisible, withverbal and judicial.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Early, Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Yannick.
Here.
Executive sessions were held September sixteenth and September twenty-fifth of this year, both concerning personnel and litigation. Dr. Antonelli, public announcements and recognition.
Yes, Mr. Wallace, thank you. First, I received a letter from the executive director of Catholic Social Services, Mr. Neil Oberto, excuse me, that I would like to share with you. Dr. Antonelli, I would like to take this opportunity to commend and thank the following senior football players, Tommy Engel, Sean Meddick, Anthony Lombardo, and Ryan Heller, as well as their coach, Mr. Mike Brennan, athletic director, Mr. Frederick Barletta. Recently, these men were responsible for moving freezers and other items into our relocated food pantry at Catholic Social Services. Their efforts helped to save the agency hundreds of dollars in not having to hire someone to do the work. The food pantry, now renamed Saint Joseph's Pantry, served over three thousand families in 2013. The effort of these students and men behind the scene will help us to continue this vital service. Their willingness to help speaks volumes in what they are being taught, both in school and at home. This spirit of giving back to the community that is fostered in the district is something to be proud of. So again, congratulations to Tommy Engel, Sean Meddick, Anthony Lombardo, Ryan Heller, as well as Coach Brennan and athletic director, Barletta. Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Antonelli. Continuing with that theme, we have five students we'd like to recognize this evening who, in the recent days, came to the aid of a third-grade student who had fallen and was jeopardized with a serious injury. These young men were working out, part of the high school basketball team, off-season workouts, and they came quickly to the aid of the young lady. They called nine-one-one, they notified security. Their timely response and judicious way of handling it made the difference for this young child, and we'd like to recognize these young men if they're here this evening. Darius Louis Cologne, Alvin Arroa, Emmanuel Manzuela Rodriguez, Efrain Nueves, and Jose Luis Laura. If any of those young men are here this evening, would you come, please? Come forward, please? Can we offer them a nice round of applause? Second recognition is for four of the, of our area high school students, been recently recognized for the Can Do, Can Do Community Foundation, announced the selection of actual seven area students, four of which are Hazelton area students, as recipients of the Edgar Dessin Community Service Award. The Dessin Award is a scholarship that allows community-minded juniors from high schools in this area, in the Can Do service area, to, the opportunity to enroll in the junior leadership of Greater Hazelton Program. If any of these young people are here this evening, if you could come forward, please. Angela LaRose, junior at Hazelton Area High School, the daughter of John and Diane LaRose. Jody Landis, Jody, of course, also a junior at the Academy of Science, the daughter of Yvonne and Jeff Landis of Sugarloaf. Justin Olander, junior at the high school, son of Lisa and Greg Olander of Sugarloaf. Okay, representing Justin, is this Brother Luke? Thanks for being here, Luke, good timing. And finally, Anna Ortiz, junior at the Academy of Science, the daughter of Wes and Blanca Ortiz of Hazelton. Congratulations to these students.
I would also like to welcome Luke Olander, who is here as the student representative to the Board of Education. Luke, I'm sure will represent himself and the students of the Hazelton Area School District in a commendable manner.
Mr. Benomo, public comment directed to board on agenda items only.
Carmine Christie.
Just ask, please, you state your name and the agenda item that you're going to discuss. Thank you.
My name is Carmine Christie, and the agenda item is number twenty-nine. Recommend the board abolish the part-time food service board position. According to my president of ESP, if you abolish the position as of tonight, the person will not have a job tomorrow. We would ask that you would abolish the position as eleven, or November the first, two thousand and fourteen. And if you would please, post without a date.
Ma'am, we, I'm sorry, we actually are doing precisely what you are suggesting and recommending.
Okay, but it wasn't on here, and she said if it wasn't there to...
We appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so not knowing that this section was for items directed towards the agenda items only, I put my name on the thing, expecting to be able to talk about a club proposal, but I guess we should wait for that at the end, yeah.
You know what, John, as long as you're here, go ahead. You can do it now. Sure, no problem.
Okay, thank you all for having me here tonight. It's an honor to be able to speak my views and ideas. I'm here to propose a new club, and this club would be the Strategy and Alternative Sports Club, or the SAS Club for short. Let me start off by stating the objectives of the SAS Club. The SAS Club will help me, help promote strategic thinking, better problem-solving abilities, team-building, and leadership. The strategy part of the name refers to games like chess, Stratego, and Risk, while also encompassing video games such as Pokemon or Civilization. Practicing strategy skills is helpful in the daily life for problem-solving and training your brain to think more efficiently. The alternative sports part refers mostly to two of my favorite pastimes, airsoft and paintball. For those of you who don't know what airsoft is, let me explain. Airsoft is very similar to paintball in many respects, aside from the fact that airsoft guns fire plastic BBs as opposed to paintballs. You might be thinking, I can see how strategy games can be helpful, but what's education about kids running around in the woods blasting each other with paint or BBs? Now, of course, there's nothing beneficial to playing in a non-strategic way, but when you start applying strategic thinking to in-game situations, you can become better at stressful decision-making and problem-solving. Paintball and airsoft are also great team-building sports. In fast-paced games, people quickly adapt to becoming more aware of the surroundings and the well-being of their teammates. Of course, there isn't really any loss to a teammate getting out, but most people fight tooth and nail to keep their friends in the game. Not only do these sports promote a strong camaraderie between teammates, but it also encourages natural-born leaders to rise up to the occasion in battle. Leaders have the ability to come up with battle plans and manage squads of players to win games. This is all fine and dandy, but only strategy, board games, and video games can be played on school grounds. What would happen to airsoft and paintball? What I like to do is set up that half of the club with a situation similar to that of ski club. What ski club does is they take a bus from the high school on Sundays to go to ski slopes around the area. I'd want to borrow this idea, instead of go to a place like Skirmish in Jim Thorpe. Skirmish is a nationally-known paintball complex that covers over five hundred acres. Going there could be a monthly or bimonthly trip, depending on the funds gathered for the club. At the end of the day, for a club to exist, there needs to be a certain amount of demand for it. With an informal petition among my main group of friends, I was able to get around thirty signatures, which is a drop in the bucket compared to what this would get out, what this would get when it's out to everyone that I don't normally talk to. I'd even expect this to be one of the more popular clubs in about a year or so. As for administrators to the club, my former history teacher, Mr. Mears, said that he'd be willing to leave the club if it were to be created. Funding a new club is a fairly rare occurrence, but I hope I made good enough points to sway you all. Also, just putting out there, creating a club would look pretty great on a college application. So, I also put in that I'd be willing to take any questions.
Jonathan, your suggestion, again, certainly has merit. The next step would be for you and Mr. Mears to make a proposal at our next curriculum and instruction committee meeting, which is in October, mid-October. If you call my office tomorrow, I can give you the date, and to present it through committee with Mr. Mears.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, and what grade are you in?
I am a junior.
You're a junior. Well, you did a very nice presentation. I, I thank you, that was, that was wonderful, something I never thought about, but certainly something I would support, just listening to your, your ideas and reasons behind it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Casey.
Casey Hursim, and I'm commenting on item number twenty-three tonight. I just wanted to let the board know that in regards to the books collected, we are actually closer to six hundred books at this point, and while a wide variety of community members generously donated books, the idea was brought forward by Maureen Chivarella, the PTA Council president. So, we're looking forward to share those wonderful books with our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it, Mr. Wallace.
Okay, motion to approve board minute.
Motion, make a motion.
Second. Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Motion to approve the treasures report for August two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second.
Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the treasures report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Dr. Antonelli.
Mr. Wallace, we are removing items sixteen and seventy-six from the agenda this evening.
Everybody have that, sixteen and seventy-six?
We'd also like to add to item twenty-nine, as Mr. Christie said, to make it effective November first, two thousand and fourteen. Two other changes in item number fifty-nine, we want to add not to exceed amounts, so those prices listed would be the maximum, because we plan on cutting items off of those lists.
We also have the salary for item seventy, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. That's twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Any questions on the additions and subtractions? No? Okay, Dr. Antonelli.
Curriculum and instruction, approve items one through twenty-three with one motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment really quick on twenty-three. I, I couldn't gather my thoughts quick enough. I'd just like to thank the parents and everyone who was involved in collecting the books. That's a tremendous effort to get that many books together in such a short amount of time, so I'd like to thank everyone who was a part of that.
I second that.
Mr. Wallace, I have a comment on number twenty-two. Until I know if there's an additional cost for next year, and how much that will be, based upon what we anticipate are problems for this year and next year in the budget, I'll be voting no on twenty-two, until I get a cost.
Did you not, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars or something like that?
Thank you, Dr. Childs, the anticipated costs were presented at the committee meeting last week, in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, I do believe. Thank you.
One other question, I'm impressed with the number of individuals who are looking to complete their principal certificates. I'm also impressed that they're all working in one school, and I'm wondering how many, how many applicants for this, or how many candidates for this position can one school accommodate in terms of providing them three hundred and fifty hours, three hundred and fifty hours, under two supervisors? Is that, I think there are four of them on this.
And again, considering the size of the school, I think it's realistic, but your point is well taken and probably at its limit.
I'm sorry, probably?
At its limit.
At its limit.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers one through twenty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on twenty-two.
I say have a motion passes.
Special education, ESL, alternative education, recommend board approve the IEE contract for independent evaluation by Richard Schillabier.
So moved, second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Number twenty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Security, approve items twenty-five through twenty-eight with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Twenty-five to twenty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items twenty-nine through thirty-one with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers twenty-nine through thirty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Transportation, approve items thirty-two through thirty-four with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Thirty-two through thirty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on thirty-three.
I say have a motion passes.
Technology, approve items thirty-five through forty-one with one motion.
Questions or comments?
Yes, on number thirty-six, again, I would bring up the fact that many, many of our students do not have access to an internet at home. What, what accommodations are being made for those individuals who do not have, you know, you're assigning material on Study Island, and if you don't have internet, you can't get Study Island? So what accommodations are being made for those students? I know last year they ran into problems with that.
We do have our high school library open two evenings per week, for several hours, two hours, I believe, on a Tuesday evening, and two hours on a Thursday evening, four students with peer tutors, and internet access is available at our high school library, as I said, two evenings per week.
Doc, is there anybody from technology? I think I see Mr. Joseph. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Briggs, I did not see you. Is there any programs statewide that you're aware of that helps provide internet services for families that can't afford it?
There is a component for home use, home access.
Good point, that's a good point, Mr. Mahalik. I would wonder if you, if you might be able to follow up on that and see what can be done in order to make that available to so many of our students who really don't have access at home.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
I know that there was one teacher last year who made specific accommodations for those individuals who did not have internet at home. I know of a number of other teachers who simply did not make those accommodations, and it can be very difficult, so, thank you.
Mr. Reba.
Numbers thirty-five through forty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items forty-two through forty-four with one motion.
So moved, second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-two through forty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
One, just one brief question to follow up on Mr. John's earlier point. How much does that amount for number forty-three? What are we talking about here in terms of?
Volunteer.
Actual finances?
A bus to Philadelphia, Mr. Barletta?
Forty-three.
Yeah, basketball team. Whenever it would be, if we were transporting a team to Philadelphia, if they take a...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Would it be possible, Mr. Barletta, for the Booster Club to chip in? Thank you.
Although I gotta think that the Booster Club, and not certainly if they can, they will, but they're probably paying a pretty good chunk, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Forget that question, Mr. Barletta.
Thank you, Mr. John.
I rescind my question.
Facilities and capital. Tony?
It was easy for you to say, you to say.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items forty-five through forty-eight with one motion.
So moved, second.
Questions or comments?
On number forty-five, is that, that's for removal, no? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gunshor, number forty-seven, that this is reasonable? Thank you. Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-five through forty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Finance, approve items forty-nine through fifty-nine with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
No, not right now, go ahead.
Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-nine through fifty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on forty-nine and fifty-nine.
No on fifty-nine.
No on fifty-nine, except for the desks.
Okay, we have Mr. Benomo, no on number fifty-nine, Mr. John is no on number forty-nine and number fifty-nine, and no from Mr. Wallace on number fifty-nine, except for the desks that are included in that order.
How do we know how much are the desks?
No, what I'm saying is the desks I'll vote to pay for, anything else, no.
I say have it, all those items pass.
Presentation of bills.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Number sixty, A through P, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on A.
No on A, and E.
No on E.
Okay, hold on a second.
No on A.
Okay, we got, I'm not done. Mr. John is no on A, Mr. Mahalik is no on A and E.
Okay. It's actually just E.
Mr. O'Donnell is no on A and E. Any other no votes?
I'm no on A, just three-two-seven-eight-four-eight, no, wait, no, three-two-eight-oh-eight-five, the last one. I'm no on that, I guess on the rest of them.
Okay, so I believe that number three-two-eight-oh-eight-five did not pass.
Correct.
The rest of the items did pass.
Let me, let me change my none, no vote to a yes.
On A?
It was never a no to begin with, but he called it out, so I didn't correct him.
No on E, Bobby.
Yeah, because otherwise we'll be paying another bill for the lawsuit that will follow, so.
Get in line.
Just no on E.
We're good at that.
And my vote against it is the perfect reason as to why we've reached a deal with Attorney Slusser, so stuff like this won't happen anymore.
So moved. On that.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items sixty-one through sixty-nine with one motion.
So moved, second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers sixty-one through sixty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on sixty-four.
No on sixty-four.
Mr. Benomo, no on sixty-four, Mr. O'Donnell, no on sixty-four.
And Mr. Wallace, no on sixty-four.
Mr. Wallace, no on sixty-four. I say have a motion passes for all those items.
Mr. Watchrow, Mr. Stock, if you are present this evening, will you please rise so we can congratulate and welcome you into the district? Prove items seventy through eighty-four with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank very much Mrs. McHale and the folks who have worked so hard on trying to get adequate bilingual aid coverage in our district. They're still working on it, but I appreciate the major time and energy that they put into making this, making this happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Reba, can I ask quickly, what, the pair of professionals that we're hiring, I'm not doubting that we don't need them, but are any of these budgeted for?
Yeah, they're all budgeted for.
These are budgeted for, yes.
They are, okay.
And I believe there are still slots available.
Okay, good.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers seventy to eighty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have a motion passes.
Again, any of the new appointees, if you're present this evening, please rise so we may acknowledge and congratulate you, Mr. Arias.
New business from the board? Oh, excuse me, before we go on.
Recommend board approve the tax abatement request of pathway to recovery and MMI prep for two thousand and fourteen for the following property parcels.
So moved, second.
Questions or comments from the audience? Okay, no, just this, we'll get that. Just with this item, nothing with this item? Okay, we'll be two minutes. Board members? Mr. Reba.
On the motion for the two tax parcels, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Nope.
I say have a motion passes.
New business from the board? Just a reminder before we open to the public, October seventh, or, excuse me, October second, Thursday night at McAdoo, six o'clock will be the next public talent meeting, October the second.
May I just make, are we allowed to make comments here, or is this just for new business?
Sure.
Okay, first off, I'd like to thank Luke for being here this evening. I've known Luke for a long time, and he'll represent the students well. I would invite you, Luke, to bring lots of business to the board. We want to know where the students stand on a variety of issues, and, okay. And the second, and the second thing is, I'd like very much to get introduced to the two young people here who are here this evening, our youngest members of the audience right now. I'd love to know who we're, whom we're speaking with here at this point.
One's teaching.
This is Julie Sanchez, and that's how the audience, not any other student.
Hello.
Thank you for being here.
Anyone from the audience, any concerns, or just please come up, ma'am, and state
Yeah, my name is Shante Armstead. I seen on number thirty-three that it says that the transportation was approved, and I've been going back and forth with the school board since August twenty-first, I believe, trying to get my daughter on the bus, and she has yet to get on the bus. I leave work every day for an hour, just to take her to school. Like, it's, it's a lot. I spoke to Dr. Antonelli, I spoke to Mr. Denotti. Everybody says, I'll call you back in ten minutes. I have yet to receive a phone call since October.
I, I didn't speak with you, ma'am.
Okay, so why isn't my daughter on the bus?
I did not speak with you.
Yes, you did, actually.
Okay, I did. I believe Dr. Butler spoke with you.
Yes, I spoke to your secretary, and I spoke to you on September second. Yes, my name, I'm sure you don't remember, but I've spoken to everybody and their secretary.
Well, ma'am, and that's okay, what is the issue? Maybe we could resolve it quickly, possibly? What?
My daughter's been going to McAdoo for two years, she's getting on the bus every day. This year, supposedly, she got kicked out the system, and when they put her back in, she didn't have a bus, so she still doesn't have a bus. So I drive her to school every single day. Where do you live? And pick her up.
Where do you live?
In Hazelton.
What boundary do you live in?
I live by, like, Wendy's. I don't know what boundary that is.
By Wendy's?
Wendy's downtown?
Yes. But she's been going to McAdoo for two years.
Right.
Mr. Denotti, is it an exemption? Or is that a school choice issue?
School choice.
School choice.
Yeah, school choice.
I don't live on that side. I live on the same side as. Yeah, I don't know where I have the address to, but my daughter's been getting on the same bus. All the kids in the neighborhood that go to McAdoo get on the same exact bus, and we're all neighbors, so I don't understand how my daughter can't get on the bus.
Ma'am, possibly we could arrange a meeting with you and Mr. Denotti for tomorrow, where you could come in and we could sit down and attempt to resolve this. What time is convenient for you? That'll work. Thank you, sir.
Is that okay with you, ma'am?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, yes. Just please state your name.
I'm a little lost. All gentlemen on this seat, it's just one woman. My name is Nancy Grover. I spoke with Dr. Antonelli and Mr. Butler on different occasions. You guys provided a wonderful opportunity for our kids to go to the pre-K, uh, schooling session, whatever it is. My son is diagnosed with PDD and OS, which is a form of autism. So, it was a no, it was a go to send him to a school. And I understand by talking to both these gentlemen that it was an option to put the seventh and eighth grade down at the high school and save money on both transportation. I have four separate children. I drive my oldest to the bus because it's several blocks away, and when I spoke to transportation, their answer was that they can walk a two-mile radius. Now, in this day and age, who wants their children walking freely on the road when somebody can just pick them up? It's all over the news. So I drive her to the bus. My second daughter goes to sixth grade over at the Heights, where I live on Mir. So I have to get the other three of my children prepared, and I spend an hour of my day driving across town after I drop off my second one over at the ninth-grade building. I drive back across town to make it to the Heights because my youngest, my two-year-old, goes to Helping Hands. It's a hardship, and I spend more than an hour of my day finding traffic on Church Street. I can understand that it was, I was apprehensive about it as well, you know, putting the seventh and eighth graders, but they go to the school at the same time as the high schoolers. It would get them prepared for the campus that they're going to anyway. And as far as the soccer or anything else, that would make more of an opportunity to save time for those children who wanted to participate in their age group. And, and put the preschoolers with their peers in the elementary buildings, because frankly, I'm thirty-seven years old. I went to an elementary school, I went to a junior high school, and I went to a high school. They were all separate entities. I never heard of, until I moved to Hazelton, an elementary going to school with a junior high school. So, I mean, I would hope that these opportunities would be represented, only because I've never seen one of you down at that ninth-grade building, and it looks like some kind of clown fest. All we're missing is the hot dogs and the cotton candy, because the ones who don't speak English, and the ones who speak English are just too ignorant to realize that there are human beings around them. They reach over, they're trying to get out of there. What about the, half of the traffic that goes on Twenty-third Street who pauses at the stop sign and is trying to hurry up and get out of there because they know the schools are going to be let out anyway? There's no security after school for these preschoolers, and the parents are just jaywalking across the street. It's a hardship for people who have more than one children, more than two children. I was apprehensive at first, too. But this, these, my son could go to the school that he's supposed to go to, the Heights, and already know his peers, already know the, the layout of the school when he goes to kindergarten, first grade, second grade, when he goes, when he goes to that school. Instead, he's making friends now, learning the layout, learning what to do now, and has to be retrained when he goes to kindergarten, or when he starts at the school that he's supposed to. And then, again, I have another hardship. When he starts the second grade, my little one is going to be in kindergarten, so I have to drive a pre-K, go drive across town again and redo the whole rigmarole. What about the winter? It's inadequate and insufficient parking for the, the new building that you provided. I mean, Mr. Latella is doing his best just to get the people in and out of there for the morning, but there's no schedule that anybody's following after which, because everybody's parking inside of the hoop, and then we have to stand out there and show ID to pick up our children, fine, but we're all standing in a line. So what happens to us when somebody's trying to get out, or somebody's honking the horn, or somebody's yelling profanities in Spanish to somebody else trying to get out of there so quickly because they don't realize that we're standing there waiting for our children? I'm lucky enough not to have to work, but this is a job in itself, driving four children to where they need to go every morning. I hope it could be reconsidered, putting the seventh and eighth graders on the campus and let them learn the layout. I've never heard of them promoting a high school and then putting an elementary school and then an elementary middle school. You've put us all at a hardship, because, again, you're going to put the seventh and eighth graders at Maple Manor anyway. So what was the point? Why did you turn it down, the proposal? These people who are, you guys are contracting daycares to do exactly what the preschool function is doing. I've talked to several parents. They are not getting the same education as they are in the school buildings. If these people, there's coordinated childcare for those people who need help paying for their daycare. I know, I was a single parent for many years. I used it. My kids went to Little Munchkins with Kim and Gina Zola, and they were prepared. They were prepared. Alana Godola is my daughter. She is basically a straight-A student. She's been National Junior Honor Society. She won the Kyle Koslop Award, an art award. I have good children, and these daycares can do that without the school board paying for them, and put the pre-K in the elementary schools where they belong. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second. Second.